Town of Maryville Town Council meeting is called to order. Before we begin our meeting, this afternoon, Deprey Dante Mims was laid to rest. A 14-year-old child who was killed on March 27th by bullets that sprayed through the windows of his home. A senseless act of terrorism by gang bangers ended this child's precious life. We, the Town Council, extends our deepest sympathy and condolences to his mother, Naomi Mims, his father, Deprey Dalton, and his brother and sisters. Due to the excellent and diligent work of our Maryville Police Officers, especially Detective Ray Smith, Detective Bob Morgan, and Detective Commander Robert Wiley, four were charged with murder and gang activity. Again and again, we thank our Maryville Police and praise them. We do not have as many officers as we need, but what we have is the best. Please keep them in your prayers as we rise for the invocation, and please continue to stand for our nation's Pledge of Allegiance.
Chair, may we have a moment of silence?
Yes, we will begin by having a moment of silence for Deprey Dante Mims. Invocation Reverend Matt Shooter from Trinity Free Methodist. Let's bow our heads and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you to bless our town and her people. We humbly ask that you hold in your hands the family of Deprey Dante Mims. Comfort them in sorrow, peace in the darkness of night. That the blessings of peace be ours, the peace to build and grow, to live in harmony and sympathy with others, and to plan for the future with confidence. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Spann.
President.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Garalcheck.
Here.
Baron. Pettit.
Here.
Whitey.
Here.
Miano.
Here.
Petitions, communications, and remonstrations. I have received a letter from Congressman Pete Waskowski. Dear Carol, thank you for contacting my Maryville District Office in regard to your concern. In response to my inquiry on your behalf, I have received a reply from the Indiana Department of Transportation, enclosed as a copy of this correspondence for your review. I hope this information will be helpful to you. Again, I appreciate you bringing this matter to my attention. Sincerely, Peter Waskowski, Member of Congress. Letter goes out to Congressman Waskowski, record number ID-869627, Canadian National Railroad crossings on Madison Street and Taft Street in Maryville. Dear Congressman Waskowski, thank you for your patience while the Indiana Department of Transportation investigated the concerns of your constituent, Ms. Carol Miano, regarding the Canadian National Railroad crossings near Madison Street and 64th and Taft Street and 62nd. CNR will work with the Town of Maryville to address these crossings. Due to the location of these crossings in northern Indiana, CNR will not begin working on these crossings until late April or early May. The timeline of the repairs depends on the availability of the material, mainly asphalt, and is weather permitting. Thank you again for conveying this concern, signed by Troy Woodroff, Chief of Staff, Indiana Department of Transportation. With copies going to Dan Schmidt, Office of the Governor, Elizabeth Johnson, Maryville Office of Congressman Waskowski, Ryan Gallagher, Indot Central Office, Robert Alderman, Indot LaPorte District, Abigail Weingart, Indot Central Office, Jim Pinkerton, Indot LaPorte District, and finally Jennifer Alander, Indot LaPorte District. So everybody knows about these crossings now, it's just a matter of time that we get it corrected. Okay, next we move on to CDBG Public Hearing. Each spring, the Lake County Community Economic Development Department applies to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, for new funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. One of the application's requirement is to hold public hearings in the communities where CDBG funding is allocated in order to obtain input from the local citizens of the proposed use or uses of the new funding. For years 2013 and 2014, the Town of Maryville CDBG allocation is approximately $144,000... $430,000, I'm sorry, $144,430,000. The most common use of CDBG funds is for infrastructure, including street reconstruction, sanitary sores, waterline extensions, storm drainage improvements, sidewalks, and projects to remove architectural barriers, handicapped access, such as curb cuts and wheelchair ramps. CDBG funds may also be used to eliminate slums and blight through demolition of unsafe buildings or other clearance activities. CDBG-funded infrastructure projects may only be done in areas where the neighborhood is at least 51% low slash moderate income according to HUD guidelines. In most cases, an income survey must be done to qualify the area for funding eligibility. The income information is taken by the survey is strictly confidential and is used solely for the purpose of determining the area's eligibility for CDBG funding. Handicapped access projects and demolition may be done anywhere in a community without the need for area income determinations. The public hearing is just the start of the application process for Lake County. There are a series of legal advertisements and comment periods that take place during the summer prior to final grant approval from HUD in late August. New CDBG funding is released to the county and its entitlement communities on or around September 1st and need to be expended by June 13th of the following year. After public comment tonight, three documents need to be read and adopted. The Affirmative Action Program, Section 3 Understanding, and a resolution authorizing the Town Executive to submit a project proposal for CDBG funding. Finally, project applications and supporting documentations need to be submitted no later than May 10th, 2013, by review from Lake County. The floor is now open for comments. Anyone have any comments? Any comments regarding the CDBG public hearing? Any comments? Public comments is closed. I also would like to have a motion to adopt the Affirmative Action Program implementing Section 3 of the Housing and Urban Development Act of 1968, the Section 3 Understanding, and the Citizen Participation Plan.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck.
Madam President, for Mr. Buschemi or Mr. King, do those need to be done individually, individual votes, Mitch, or can we vote on all three at once?
You can vote on all three at once.
Okay.
Take this motion into consideration. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Check it.
There you go. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion passed, six to zero. Our next order of business under petitions.
Madam President, could we also do the resolution at this time?
We can move to...
It's on the agenda for consideration in section...
It's under resolutions.
Yeah, under resolutions.
Section 8B.
Okay, because generally, we've always, when we do these, we've always done the resolution along with...
If the council adopts a motion to take that matter of business out of order at this point, you certainly can do that.
Motion to take it out of order.
Second.
Let's have a vote on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries, six to zero.
Resolution is now before the body, here, Madam President.
And the resolution is now in front of the Town Council Body. I have a copy of this, yes, thank you. We will go to resolution, the reading of Resolution 1308. A resolution authorizing and directing the Town Council President of the Town of Maryville to submit a project proposal for Community Development Block Grant Funds for federal fiscal years 2013 and 2014.
Still move.
Check it.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Whiting. Do I have any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries, six to zero.
Thank you.
Is there anything else we need to do? You said there was three orders of business, affirmative action plan, the resolution.
That's the three. Yes, sir.
You did the public hearing.
Okay, okay.
There's three documents in the public hearing we have to do. Actually, the resolution was a fourth.
Okay. Yeah, we're all good.
All right.
Very good.
Are we good, Mitch?
Very good.
Okay. Let's go on to...
Software.
The Bitco Software Contract. Bitco Software, thank you for your inquiry and interest in our permit tracking system. This document is an offer letter for our product and services. As you can see from the table below, Bitco Software uses a flat fee structure with no hidden fees or special calculations needed for maintenance and licensing fees. We are also offering a discounted rate for the 2013 calendar year. The cost is outlined. Covers the software licensing, data conversion, training, and customization. Most billable work, such as permit customization, custom reports, and training is covered under the implementation costs for up to one year after your go-live data. Once that year ends, our standard rate of $145 per hour applies. As we are a software company, it is the town's responsibility to provide the hardware and database software needed to implement the system. The current requirements are nothing extravagant and can be found in the product guide. If you have any questions, please call us. This offer is good for calendar year and will expire on December 31st, 2013. With this contract, we are at a discount pricing of $42,500. The original price, $100,000. So we are having a very good offer before us and quite a bit of savings.
Madam President, members of the council, I might also add that two other proposals were considered by the staff before presenting this proposal to the council, and those other proposals were much more costly, in part because they entailed quarterly hosting fees that the town would have been responsible for on a perpetual basis every quarter that the software were used. So this is the lowest and most responsible proposal that the town has for its consideration.
Very good. Any questions from anyone regarding this contract? Okay, very good. We will move on.
You need to take action on it.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt the contract.
We have a motion to adopt the contract.
Motion to adopt.
Second for discussion, I'm sorry, Madam President.
All right, motion made by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Pettit. All in favor signify by saying aye.
He's got discussion.
Gene, where are we getting the money for this?
This is the apartment rental fee.
The rental registration fee?
The rental registration.
Okay, just so everybody knows, $42,000, where, you know...
Yeah, this, Dorinda and Howard worked on this.
Okay.
The money, Mr. Pettit, the money is in the upcoming budget that I believe the council is considering.
Council's gonna consider tonight, yeah, okay.
And the funding is already procured and available.
Actually, that is under their budget. They had so much money for that program.
Okay, very good. Yes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, six to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, accounts payable, register voucher approval, March 26, 2013, also approval of Town Council minutes of March 12, 2013. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilman Whiting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries, six to zero. Standing committees, Budget and Finance, Councilman Garalcheck.
Uh, yes. Under Budget and Finance, I'm gonna meet with Jim Bennett, and we had talked about paving. So I need to kind of figure out how much money we're gonna need for paving this year. So if you guys can get together with Bruce and figure out what kind of streets we're gonna do for paving and see what kind of estimates we can get together so I can go to Jim Bennett and ask him exactly how much money we can bond for, or if we can even bond. So I would ask that in the next week or so that you have your streets prepared that you would like to get paved.
What street we talking?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, Rich. The only advice or comment I can make as a member, Tom, is why don't we let Jim tell us what we can afford? And then we just divvied up seven ways like we've done so many years before, and if we each only get one street, we each only get one street. You know, if we get, you know, because, no offense, you got a whole subdivision. I got two huge roads out in the panhandle that could eat up a million dollars. If you guys want me to put my list in, I'm putting Gene's road in there at $500,000. So I don't know that we wanna, you know, I think maybe what we probably ought to do, Bruce, I don't, you know, there's all kinds of streets we could come up with a wish list.
Yeah, that's true. Believe me, I could come up with a lot myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we just wait and see how much money we can...
See what he tells us we can spend, I guess it'd be my comment. I don't know.
Between whatever money we get there and what we can pull out of some of the TIF districts to do neighborhood roads.
Yeah.
Throw out a lot of money together and then divide it up wherever the council sees fit.
We get excited and tell you five streets and you come back and say...
Say, no, you only got three. Which is, which Bruce brings up a good point, too, of, you know, we probably need to examine the TIF districts.
I mean, we need to do is actually go out and do an inventory and prioritize.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that we really never have done.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, even if we got Robinson out there and did an inventory on the streets, I don't know what it's gonna cost us for an inventory to say, look, we can hold off on this one, or this is something that we really need to do. I mean, it's something we need to look at. We need to have a master plan instead of saying, we're gonna do this this week and we're gonna do this the next week. I mean, we should have a master plan of what we're gonna do as far as paving.
61st Avenue, this one, it really tore it up from Cleveland down to Broadway.
Right.
And when the water line got put in, they didn't pave it until like the end of November.
Right.
That's not good.
I got 56th Avenue on the east side.
Right.
You know, we could come up with streets, but I think that, Tom, if you could tell us how much money we gonna get, because, I mean, I've got street, I got one street by subdivision, 56th Place, no, 56th Lane, that is in...
And that's probably about a $50,000 project.
Yeah, because if I remember right, it's at least that, because we don't, it's that uncertainty of...
Exactly.
...paved into the curb, and so do we only replace 20 percent of curb.
It may be more than that.
Oh, we don't know.
But I think Tom's got a good idea, and I would ask, Madam President, through my Public Works Committee, I'd be more than happy, Bruce, why don't we, why don't we talk to Ron and Bob, now that we have our, we met our new engineer during RDC, and just ask them, it's not gonna cost us anything, how much would a pavement maintenance inventory cost? And then we can come back to the council and decide, and along with what Tom's gonna do with Budget and Finance, we do a two-prong approach, you know, but I think you're right, Tom, we probably need to get a handle on what...
We need to prioritize.
Because there's gonna be a point where, you know, we're gonna have to shut Gene's street down, and he's not gonna be able to come to work anymore.
Right.
You got money, you can get a helicopter.
The issue we always ran in with that idea was because we never knew how much paving we were, money we were getting per year.
Dollar amount doesn't matter, we need to know...
So you could go out and you could, you could review all the paving and come up with a, you know, worst-case scenario, and you wouldn't be able to afford to pave the worst-case scenario. So in five years, your list is antiquated, and you're gonna have to do it all over again because you may have had some roads that just went to pieces in two years. So if we're gonna do something, it's a great idea, but we also, we also need money to do the work, so...
That's all I got.
Okay, very good. Public Works, Councilman Pettit.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, based on a recommendation by our Public Works Director, we received the following bid for two single-axle dump trucks with snow removal equipment, and it appears that the lowest bid was Truck City of Gary for $327,108. Bruce has made, is recommending that this be awarded for two Freightliner model 108 SD trucks per the specifications, and again, the bid did meet the specifications by 100%. Madam President, I make a motion that we purchase the two single-axle dump trucks from Truck City of Gary, per the Public Works Director's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Do we have any discussion on this, any further discussion?
Funding source, Bruce. Refresh me.
Yeah, it's gonna be CCD funds. We were going to take out a five-year...
Indiana Bond Bank?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which we already started that with the loader, and actually, with the cost of the loader and now these two trucks, we were able, the bank said try to stay under like $467,000 or whatever we are, so with these trucks, we'll be about $4,000.
$466,998.
We'll be, we'll be under, we'll be under our magic number by four grand.
Okay.
Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion passed, six to zero, for Truck City of Gary to receive the bid.
Okay, one other item, Madam President, I got a call today on collections, bring cleanup. What's our schedule look like, Bruce, for the rest of the weekend and next week? Where are we at?
Well, we're in our second week, so we're doing the areas south of 73rd Avenue, but as everybody knows, you've been around long enough that we have a schedule, and then we always go back. Unfortunately, the newsletter didn't get out in everybody's hands until probably three or four days before pickup started north of 73rd, so it really didn't give a lot of people a lot of time to get their stuff together. So we'll make another pass-through town, but we're, right now, we're south of 73rd, and we're gonna be heading south of 30 here pretty soon, and then we'll start all over.
Okay. That's all, go ahead, that's all I have, Madam President.
Well, we need to make sure that the press puts, gets that out there, CHAS and...
Aaron.
...that we are gonna make a second pass-through, probably two weeks from now, starting up north again, and that'll, that will be the last pass.
Correct.
Okay, moving on to council affairs, Councilman Spann.
I have nothing on council affairs, but I want to, you know, I seen them patching 73rd going towards Mississippi. So you guys are out doing paddles, right?
Yeah, we're doing paddles, too, and picking up branches and...
I didn't know we were doing branch work. I'm just saying, I saw them. Look, they were out there.
We're getting there.
Okay, we're moving on to personnel policy and employee benefits, Councilman Garalcheck.
Uh, yes. The secretary's position, we're gonna hire Stacy Geza, and her start date will be April 18th. Her hours are gonna be 32 hours a week with, which will vary due to her workload. My motion is to hire Stacy Geza as the Administrative Secretary.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Whiting, to hire Stacy Geza as the part-time Administrative Secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, yes, Councilman Spann.
We talked about an intern until she gets here, somebody to...
Yeah, I'm gonna work on that right now.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries, six to zero.
And I have a letter here from Councilman Miano. An emergency needed for a temporary part-time Administrative Secretary position at a rate of 1428 per hour, and accordance with ordinance 1305 will be filled effectively April 9th by Charlotte Signa, a recent retirement of Maryville employee who held that position. So this employment will not affect any retirement benefits she is currently receiving, and she will be paid as a contractual employee by the Town of Maryville until the hiring and training of the permanent part-time Administrative Secretary is completed. Also, she has agreed that if Stacy needs to have a day off or whatever, she would come in and fill that position, too. So my motion is for, to hire Charlotte as a contractual services at a rate of 1428 per hour.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Pettit. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries, six to zero, to hire Charlotte.
One other thing that we have under Personnel Employee Benefits is Howard has left us for another job in someplace else, so at this time, I would like to boost Bruce up and hire him as the interim Town Administrator, and that's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Pettit. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Discussion, Madam President, for, are we gonna go out and look for a town manager?
I'm gonna have a meeting next week, that's my next order of business. I'm gonna have a meeting at 5:00 PM on the 17th to discuss our options.
Okay.
But at this time, my motion is to bring Bruce up as the interim Town Administrator.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries, six to zero.
One other thing is group administrators from, had a, I had them put a, something in your package about this therapy for the autism. It was something that got overlooked. I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to take a look at this medical claim that we have. The total bill on there was $2,850, and total negotiated amount for milestone therapy for the visits of over 20, visits of PT, OT, STIs for $1,900. Forest Financial said that they negotiated it down to $1,900 for the autism coverage. My motion is to go ahead and pay this bill.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Hardaway, to pay the amount of $1,900 to, for therapy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries, six to zero. Anything else on the personnel policy and employee benefits?
No, that's all I have.
Public safety, Councilman Whiting.
Madam President.
Parks and Recreation, Councilman Spann. Environmental Affairs, Councilman Garalcheck.
Yes, I have a memo here from Mr. Matt Lake, he's on vacation this week. Since I'll be on vacation from April 9th through April 15th and out of town, I'm writing a few remarks for you on Tuesday, April 9th, Town Council meeting, if you would please include them in your environmental committee report. Regarding the Taft Street Drainage Project, NIPSCO is concluding their work on the Taft Street and dire constr... Street and Dyer Construction will resume work later this month on the project with installation of the box culvert and final work for the project. The Stormwater Office will notify the police, fire, ambulance departments as well as Maryville Community School Corporation and the public of any delays or lane closures. At March 13th, Special Stormwater Board Meeting, Stuttler Architects was selected by the Board to design the Stormwater Resource Center, final plans should be complete soon. On April 2nd, the monthly board meeting last week, eight sealed bids were opened for the 54th Avenue Project for the Stormwater, Storm Sewer, work to be done on Johnson to Fillmore and the Meadowdale. The bid amounts were read aloud and taken under advisement, First Group Engineering is examining the bids and a special board meeting will be held soon to announce the lowest bidder and most prospective bidder. A workshop regarding stormwater protection will be held at the Lake County Contractors and Buildings on Wednesday, April 24th, starting at 8:00 AM at the Town of Dyer Plum Creek Center. There is no cost to attend the seminar and contractors and builders can call the Lake County Surveyors Office to register. The Stormwater Utility Planning and Building and Public Works Offices have copies of brochures on the counters if anyone'd like to pick them up. That's all I had under Stormwater.
Madam President, to Tom for his committee, um, I don't know where we left it, folks, as far as this, uh, Stormwater Resource Center. Um, I know they've done a bond issue, I know we acquired the property up there on Broadway, um, I, I don't know if I'm the only one thinking this, is this something that we're going to, I mean, a, any thoughts? I mean, is this something that, you know, we got a lot of vacant buildings out in town, you know? Could they occupy one of those, um, take the funds and I'm sure, Mr. Buscemi, they could reauthorize the bond issue, use that money for other projects in the, you know, in the pipeline as opposed to doing the building? I, I don't know where we left it, that's why I'm asking, I, I don't mean to do it on the floor, Madam President, but.
That would be a great cost-saving measure.
I just, you know.
And put the money where it matters, back into the taxpayers that are having flooding concerns, and you're right, we have so many buildings in our town that are vacant, I'm sure one could work just as well as a brand-new building.
Aye.
Let's, let's look at, you know, saving some dollars here.
I don't know what authority, I guess, back to John, I don't know what authority we as the council have, I mean, we're quote-unquote the ultimate, the ultimate say as elected officials, we appointed the three members to the Stormwater Board, but once the bond issue's been done and they're, I mean, what, what remedy do we have, I suppose? I mean, is there any way the council can step in on this or is Stormwater Board their own, once the decision's made, it's been made?
Councilman, that's a, it's a significant inquiry and I would request time to research that issue.
And I, I don't know how the other councilmen feel, I don't know if you guys.
Report back if instructed to the council.
You know, are, like Carol said, are there other projects that are worthy, physical projects that need to be done? I'm sure Bruce knows, uh, as opposed to building the building, um, that we could, you know, I've, I've heard rumblings from people in the, in town, I'm sure we all, seven of us, you know, why are we building this brand-new facility? Do they need it? Can we renovate? And as Carol alluded to, what about projects that, that may not get done? I throw it out there for discussion.
I just need to point out one thing that, um, at least 50% of that building, if not more, is gonna be storage, it's gonna be a garage where we can, the equipment's gonna be.
Park the equipment?
So, yeah, you're just not looking for an office, you're actually looking for a building.
Yeah.
What we liked about that site right there is 'cause it was right there with Public Works, so we would be one just large facility.
They have scaled back on their project.
Have they?
Yeah, it's scaled back quite.
Scaled back quite a bit. Uh, a lot of the things they took out, uh, I mean, basically, it's gonna be almost like the Public Works building in the front and a big garage in the back for them to party equipment. And, I mean, they're, they have really scaled back on the project, I mean, to meet the budget of, of what they're gonna do, that's why they hired Stuttler to come back and review the plans and take out.
They reduced, the architect reduced the cost, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just thought I would ask.
I'd like to say something. I heard that that furniture store right by there is empty.
Yeah, but I called them, Don, and they're already leasing it. They got somebody coming in that's gonna be coming to see Durinda, by the way, Durinda.
It's up.
Yeah, they, I, I asked them about that as well and they said no, I thought that would've been a good location too.
Yeah, we would just have a facility that's got high enough ceilings that you could pull in a sewer jet and that's where you, the issue is that you're gonna have to build something for this equipment to be able to get into.
Yeah. Okay.
Back of that building, the warehouse is tall enough.
The back end, yeah.
I've never been at, I'm just pointing out that.
What, Slater's?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's been leased, so.
Well, I gotta call them, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, I was just.
No, it's, yeah.
Just curious.
Okay, anything else on Environmental Affairs?
No, I'm good.
Seeing none elections and public relations, I have no report. Economic Development, Councilman Garalcheck.
Oh, that committee got turned over to Mr. Pettit today.
Good. Councilman Pettit.
Well, you're, you're still in charge of economic development though, Tom. I'm in charge of redevelopment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, you have anything for economic development?
I don't have anything, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll take redevelopment. Redevelopment tonight, Matt, we re, we elected officers, I was lucky enough to be, um, elected president. Uh, we did a wetlands mitigation, uh, agreement with Robinson that is a part of Mississippi Street Phase Four. Um, I informed, uh, the members of where we're at with the right-of-way purchase, we've got 65 parcels, uh, to purchase on Mississippi Street Phase Four. Uh, we've currently closed on about seven of them, uh, with another couple dozen that have got offers out on them. Um, we are going to go ahead and pay, end up the $86,000 change order on the US 30 right-of-way or, um, Frontage Road Project, uh, and Mr. Buscemi is still trying to, uh, work through the, uh, legal channels to see if we can't get, uh, that money reimbursed, but Endot sent Bruce an invoice and we have to pay that, otherwise the contractors don't get paid. The guys are back out there working, uh, on the project. Um, Tom and I talked, he's gonna kinda, uh, keep his ears and eyes on that since he, uh, shepherded that thing through. Um, the, uh, other item that we did at the redevelopment tonight was we entered into a, uh, engineering design contract with Butler Fairman Seifert for the 101st Avenue Bridge, uh, to get a ca, a concrete cost of what that's gonna cost. I made some inquiries into looking at the, uh, Broadway AmeriPlex bond that's $10 million. Uh, now that we've got some larger developments out there generating some bigger increments, uh, we may be able to, uh, refinance the bond, get a better rate and get more money where we can replace that bridge over I-65. Uh, when Dawn Foods gets fully operational, their trucks are gonna be going out both north and south on 101st Avenue, 93rd Avenue, Broadway, uh, all through that area, so we need to address some of that infrastructure out there. Um, am I forgetting anything, Bruce? From RDC?
I think that's it.
Okay, that's all I have.
Very good.
You're still in charge of tax abatement, Tom.
Utility liaisons, back to you, Councilman Pettit.
Um, other than the utility, uh, issues, uh, that John is dealing with on the US 30 Frontage Road Project, um, I have gotten a couple of calls out here, uh, on Broadway from some residents, uh, they've been contacted by Indiana American Water, they're gonna be starting up that replacement, uh, they stopped at Fannie Mae last year, they were doing all that work down south by the hospital and by the Chase, uh, Bank Building, uh, they're gonna be starting up and they go to Deer Path Road, right, Bruce? They started, they stop at Deer Path and they're gonna be replacing the lines right out here, uh, in front, in front of the office building across the street from us, so, um, other than that, um, I don't have anything. Um, I know we still have a pending issue out there with MCD and Modern Drop Forge that we're gonna have to address here, uh, as we get into the transition and get Bruce up to speed on that, uh, as those guys continue to develop out there on Colorado Street, so, uh, we could talk about that later.
Okay, anything else on the utility liaisons? Going to Town Government Reorganization, we are now starting to really get into this, uh, committee. We took a full-time Administrative Secretary and now created a part-time position. Uh, we will be making every effort to find cost-saving measures as we analyze positions, jobs, and performances. We will be reviewing our personnel polities, policies and making amendments as, uh, needed, updating and making corrective language and, uh, seeing what else we could do to save our town a couple dollars. Okay, that's all I have under Town Government Reorganization. Going to ordinance, ordinance 13-08, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating a budget for the rental registration program in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year 2013, not included in the current budget. It, again, it is the interest of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, to protect the public from the threat of danger into health and safety from public nuisances and substandard housing. Do I have any discussion?
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman, uh, Garalcheck.
No, by.
I'm sorry.
Span.
Span. You guys, you have a bad ear, I got a bad ear, I got a bad ear. Mr. Gernsy, roll call, please.
I'm gonna take public comments, this is the second reading.
Oh, it's the second, I'm sorry, public comment, do we have any public comment regarding the, uh, the rental registration program? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Aye.
Miano?
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. We have an ordinance, dash, 1309, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring certain monies within certain categories in the Property Seizure Fund, a decrease of $7,875, an increase of $7,870.
So moved.
Do we have, do we have any discussion? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any discussion? Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Uh, roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Aye.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Seeing no BCA actions, do we have any old business? Any old business?
Madam President, I have a question for, for Durinda, this came up under RDC, Durinda. The petitions that Tom has filed for out in front for our signage project to finish off Town Hall, are those developmental variances or is there a use variance involved on the reader board?
Developmental.
Developmental, so it'll stop at the BCA? So in April, well, the end of April, we'll be all ready to go? Okay.
Any other old business? Seeing none, do we have any new business? Any new business? Seeing none, public comment? Please come up and state your name. Yes, Mr. Schweitzer. I bet I can guess what you're coming up here for, right?
I was just, I was just thinking that, Carol.
You get to everybody through their stomach.
This is true.
Not a bad idea.
This Sunday, the Lions Club has a great pancake, French toast, and something new added this year, biscuits and gravy. And then something else that you don't know, there's gonna be a Dixie cup with some fruit in it, so you're gonna get a few extra things. All you can eat, biscuits and gravy, pancakes, French toast, this Sunday at the American Legion.
What time?
Eight to one.
Eight to one, and you know what, there's something else they don't know, I'm gonna be serving with you again this year.
Well, right.
Right. We'll see you Sunday, thank you, Vernon. I have, uh, one more under, uh, well, public comment, I guess, there's gonna be a benefit of our spaghetti dinner for the Ross Township Food Pantry. It will be Thursday, May 9th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at Saint Constantine and Helen, Hellenic Cultural Center, 800 Madison Street here in Maryville, adults $8, children 12 and under $5. It's a dine-in and carry-out. Um, it benefits the Helping Hand Fund.